July 28th, 2020, meeting of the Arcata Planning Commission. As you know, the Planning Commission meeting is being held as a teleconference in response to local efforts to reduce the spread of the COVID-19 virus. Before we start, I want to thank the community for their efforts to practice social distancing. Social distancing and self-isolation are the most effective and practical ways to slow the spread of the virus and increase the best outcomes for our medical system. As the number of individuals testing positive for the virus increases, it becomes even more important that we adhere to strong sanitary practices of staying home, washing our hands and surfaces, and staying distance from those outside of our immediate social units. In addition, the Humboldt County Health Officer has issued an order requiring the use of face coverings for anyone in an outdoor facility, an enclosed space, or an outdoor space where social distancing of at least six feet is impractical. Remember, you are covering your face to protect others who are vulnerable and most at risk. A few teleconferencing items before we start. First and most importantly, if you are not actively speaking, please mute your microphone. The meeting will be difficult to hear if microphones are not muted, except for the individual speaking. Second, deliberations and questions will be conducted by roll call. The liaison will manage deliberations. Please raise your hand electronically using the teleconference function if you would like to speak. I make call roll for last comments. Third, all votes will be taken through a roll call vote. Please answer a or nay when your name is called. Last, public comment is being accepted by email. The email address is PC@cityofarcada.org. PC is short for public comment. Emails are accepted for both specific agenda items and general comments. Comments on specific agenda items will be read by staff during that agenda item. The public can email additional public comments now to be read and to be recorded as part of this meeting. And now we will begin this meeting. And Mr. Loy, if you would please do a roll call.
Absolutely. Chair Taggney?
Here.
Vice Chair Mayor?
Here.
Commissioner Figueroa?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Here.
Commissioner Davies?
Here.
Commissioner Visage Delcock?
Here.
And Commissioner Barstow?
Here.
All present.
Unmute. We are joined this evening by Senior Planner Joe Mateer and Community Development Director David Loyah. We will begin first with our consent calendar. And the only item on our consent calendar are meeting minutes from our last meeting. If we don't have any objections, then I'll look for a motion.
I need to make a correction to the minutes.
Okay, let's do that first.
Sorry, my dog is barking. I recuse myself from that project. And it has on here that I voted, but I actually recuse myself.
The minutes will be corrected.
Is there any other corrections? Seeing none, do we have a motion on the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve with corrections.
Do we have a second?
Second, Ben.
We have a motion and second. We'll now do a roll call, and I'll just go ahead and conduct that. This is a or nay in favor of approving the consent calendar. Commissioner Visage Delcott?
A.
Commissioner White? Commissioner Barstow?
Yes.
Commissioner Figueroa?
A.
Vice Chair, Commissioner Mayor?
Yes.
And Commissioner Davies?
A.
Okay, motion carries, consent calendar passes, and we'll move on to our public hearing item for the evening. And pardon my paper pile here. Where is it? Well, David, can you remind me what the exact project description is? I'm missing that page.
Exactly, yes, again. So the public hearing A is consider approving the Hunt Design Review Permit at 100 East 7th Street.
Thank you. Can we begin with a staff report, please?
Yes, good evening, commissioners and viewing public. My name is Joe Mateer, the assigned planner for this project. Before you this evening is a design review permit for a small addition and remodel of a eligible potential historic resource located in the Bayview neighborhood conservation area. Staff is recommending the planning commission. Can you hear? Are other people having a difficulty with the audio?
I can hear you.
Okay, so I'll continue. The staff is recommending the planning commission adopt the action found as Attachment A, which would approve the design review permit for the said remodel in addition. It includes the findings and conditions of approval. Including in that action would be the adoption of a Class 31 California Environmental Quality Act equate exemption for historical resources. The project, as I mentioned, is located in the Bayview Neighborhood Conservation Area. It's a structure that was a unique structure that is in a kind of a high visibility area along 7th Street, just east of Highway 101. It's a large lot, about 1.8 acres in size. It has two dwelling units on the property. The subject dwelling unit known as the Emily House, or as referenced in the Susie Van Kirk book, the Lamberson House, and also the Lindsay House that was developed earlier in the 1980s. The Lamberson House, or what is known now as the Emily House, was developed in, I believe, 1908. It is a small, single-wide bedroom width, and it's a unique structure. It's identified as kind of the shotgun, or you know, for whatever reasons. I can get into that if you'd like to hear that. But the project, the applicants are looking at redesigning the interior of the structure to improve the functionality to more modern needs, and also a less than 200 square foot addition to the rear of the building to again improve the functionality of the property. The applicant worked with a licensed architect and designed the project basing the Secretariat Interior Standards of Treatment of Historic Properties in that design. So here we have the, off of the 7th Street, the existing house would be the Lamberson or Emily House, with the addition shown in pink to the rear. The property was identified as being, or the structure was identified as being eligible for historic resources based on a City of Arcata survey. It is not a listed historic landmark structure, but our current land use code does require design review when we have potential historic resources with additions such as this. So that is why the planning commission is hearing this project, and it really is to protect those historic resources and make sure that any additions are not going to have an adverse effect on the significance of that resource. The project, as I mentioned, would be a small interior remodel. There is the addition to the rear, less than 200 square feet. And then also there'll be some, an outdoor exterior patio and privacy screening off to the east side of the building. The project was identified with, if I could go to next slide, please? That's the interior. That's the existing interior. So it's a small, basically more than one room, but it's kind of had that large kitchen, and they're gonna go to the next slide, please. And there we have the proposal there. Increase the functionality of it. And if we could have the next slide. This is in your planning commission packet. Here are the exterior elevations existing with the proposed improvement to it. So the exterior alterations, there is a relocation of a door on the east side, and then also that small addition to the rear. The project is compatible, if we have the next slide, please. This is a list of the project components. I did highlight the one in green there. That would not be any components that requires design review. But the other actions or other project components would trigger design review. If I could have the next slide, please? And these are prepared by the licensed architect. They do match the Secretariat Interior Standards for the Treatment of Historic Properties. Those are known treatments that are acceptable practices for when you have a rehabilitation project such as this. And I listed those items there. Again, those are in your staff report. Staff does concur with the applicant's, the agent's determination that it is in keeping with the Secretariat Interior Standards. And if I have the next slide, please? This is just from the Susie Van Kirk. It was included in the project. And I believe there's one more slide. I was expecting a different one. Nope, I guess not. But anyway, the conditions of approval refer to, there was a condition of approval added by the Engineering Division, and it has to do with the driveway and also the sidewalk repair. Another condition of approval is related to references from, or a referral from the Tribal Historic Preservation Officers of the Wiat Tribes for cultural resources. It is in a potentially sensitive area. And so the condition of approval would require ground disturbing, I mean, cultural monitors during ground disturbing activities. Again, staff recommends the planning commission adopt the action, including the finding, the conditions of approval, and the California Environmental Quality Act sequoia exemption for historic resources. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. The agent and property owner are available if the planning commission has any questions for them as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Are there any questions of staff on that report?
Looks like Commissioner Barstow has a question.
Yeah, this is just a clarification. Can you tell us what the Class 31 exemption is?
That is for, when you utilize the Secretariat Interior Standards for the Treatment of Historic Properties, you can utilize that sequoia exemption. So it's really only used when there's a historic resource and you're applying the Secretariat Interior Standards.
Commissioner Figueroa?
Yeah, so under the conditions of approval for the sidewalk and driveway conditions, as requested by the Engineering Department, does the ink, does the proposed improvement to the driveway by pavement, does that increase impermeable surface greater than 2,500 square feet? So it's considered a small project under the stormwater program or LID?
The applicant did provide a stormwater form for the project. At that time, it was based on the addition and the patio work. With the driveway improvement, what we're looking at is just trying to keep the gravel from migrating into the sidewalk in the public right of way. The typical standard would be 50 feet of durable pavement. But there has been some flexibility in situations like this. The grade of the driveway is such that it probably doesn't, you know, if it was a steeper grade sloping down into the sidewalk and right of way, it would probably dictate more of a longer length of that pavement. But then, in this case, it would be up to the discretion. I doubt that with the entire project, it would include greater than 2,500 square feet.
Thanks for the clarification.
The applicant's agent may be able to speak to that as well. Chair Taggney?
Yeah. My question is, is there an assumption that this project will be going through the historic application to be on the notable historic list at some point, or?
I'm not aware of any indication for that, and I'll defer that to the property owner agent.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
Would you like me to address that?
How about in just a few minutes? We'll close this portion and open it up for public comment, and then we'll hear from you and your agent both.
Okay, thank you.
If there are no more commission clarification questions of the staff report, we can go ahead and move on to public comment. Seeing none, let's do that. So if the applicant and/or his agent would like to speak, or both, or anybody else?
My name's Howard Hunt, and I'm the applicant. And we have, or are considering the addition of that to the historic landmark. You know, going through all the different criteria for that. We haven't made, finished making our judgment on that based on, you know, if there are adverse effects on our ability to maintain that property. You know, we're pretty conscientious stewards of that piece of property, understanding the archaeological significance, which I don't think we've really touched on, but there's significant Indian Native American history involved here, and also historical issues associated with the buildings. Mr. Mateer talked about that. He actually mentioned that the Lindsay property was built in the 1980s. In fact, it was built in 1859, or 1851, pardon me. So it's actually older than the Phillips House. So, and we understand that, and we actually want to do everything we can to make sure that it stays in our family, because our family is very significantly invested in all of the historical prospects of property. But we have not yet made the application. We have been in contact with Alex Stillman, and have talked about it. In fact, the Lindsay property won the award the year that we did that, when we remodeled that house for restoration. So we kind of have a history of staying with the history. We also remodeled the church up on 11th Street, pardon me, 14th Street. That also won an adaptive reuse when we did that property.
Sorry, forgot to unmute. If you're done, and there's anybody else who would like to speak to this, now's your time. Well, thank you for your presentation, Joe, and thorough report. And yeah, I just wanted to add that we're pleased to get awards on the other projects that Howard and his family have done. And they turned out nice and really worked hard to be sure that they were honoring the historic value of the structures we're working on. So we're trying to do the same with this one. I don't know if we want to talk about the sidewalk and driveway improvements now, but one of the questions we did have was how much sidewalk improvements you guys are considering in the conditions of approval? I haven't been down there to really look at closely at how much, how many areas are falling apart, but I'm not sure how bad it is. Joe, did you look at that a little closer? Or did the Engineering Department?
Would the chair like me to respond to that, please?
Yeah, I think that would be great, Joe. Thank you.
Yes, there, the property does have a long expanse of a very, you know, a wider sidewalk in that area. There's really two areas that potentially have some tripping hazards, and there are cracks that are parallel to the, a lot of times cracks might be perpendicular to the sidewalk, but this one's parallel, running down almost the center of the sidewalk itself, parallel to the street and the property line. And it's almost like just two sections of concrete. I'm not sure what the exact length of that concrete section is of that sidewalk, but there's, I think it's only about two or three sections of that. And then there's a little bit of a concrete breaking up at the apron of the driveway encroachment. So I think it's a very small area. The sidewalk is in pretty good condition, I would say, but there's those two areas that were noted by the Engineering Division.
All right, thanks. Yeah, I'm remembering that now, that there is a crack in front of Emily's house. I think because the sidewalk might have been built on a little bit of fill right there, because the sidewalk's actually maybe 18 inches above the front yard of Emily's house. So, yeah, there is. So is the Engineering Department expecting that that would get repaired then as part of a condition of approval?
If I may respond to that as well. The sidewalk repair would be required regardless of this project. It is part of the municipal code that property owners do maintain the sidewalks fronting their property. So this is part of, would again be required regardless of it. But it did bring to, because we're doing those improvements, we're doing the driveway improvements as well. So it has been added as a condition of approval specifically to this project.
Anything else, Mr. Berg? Well, the other question I have, yeah, is the pavement and how far back we would be required to pave at 50 feet? Did sound like quite a bit. I think, you know, there's, it's a relatively small addition, and we are remodeling the interior of the house. So it does add money to the whole project. And we're already going, probably spending more money that can be recovered in what is typically considered a payback period in the economic world. But, you know, I just wanted to discuss how far back. I think in the county, they often require 20 feet. Is that something you would consider to go back 20 feet, being that the driveway is fairly level?
If I could jump in real quick on the item, the Engineering Division, the way that the condition is written, I believe it leaves the discretion to the city engineer to, you know, make a final decision on that. Oftentimes, you know, paper or strips, papers or wheel strips are acceptable, but the code does call for 50 feet of paving. And so I would recommend that the planning commission, you know, because that is a standard in the code, that the planning commission not necessarily take the discretion to amend that condition and leave that authority to the, to the city engineer. So we can certainly talk about that after the meeting and talk through the particulars on the parcel, but generally speaking, 50 feet is the standard.
Okay. Anything else that, question? So when, when do you think the Engineering Department would comment on that? Is that during plan check? Or is that something I could talk to them about sooner than later?
Yeah, absolutely. You can give them a call tomorrow and start working on that.
Okay.
And if you want, after this meeting, to reach out to me, I can, I can walk through the finer steps as to more detail.
Okay. Howard, did you have anything to add on that one?
No, you know, we discussed that. I was under the impression that 20 feet would be enough. I know that it's, you're trying to find a balance between, you know, hard surfaces that would run into the city, storm drainage versus what could be absorbed by the land and all that. So, yeah, really, it's pretty flat. You know, the one thing, Julian, that I don't, I'm not sure of is that that driveway is not really on our property.
Debatable. So I do want to just jump in as a point of order. I know it's hard to track, because, you know, we're in a different forum, but unlike many Zoom meetings, the planning commission's meeting is intended to still maintain the formality of a public hearing. Typically during the public comment stage, it's an opportunity for the agent and any public members to present the project, and there's generally not a back and forth. And so I can certainly take the time after this meeting, Joe, and I can, you know, take a few minutes after the meeting to discuss those finer details with you and point towards a pathway. What our objective is at this time is to try and get the project approved through the planning commission with these conditions of approval that can then be discussed in more detail with the city engineer, who has ultimately the authority to modify or look for amendments that would be, you know, financially amenable.
All right, thank you, David. Lloyd, Mr. Berg, is there anything else you'd like to add to your comments?
No.
Okay. And, Mr. Loy, are there any public comments that you've received via email?
I will check one more time, but I don't believe we've received anything. There are no new emails on this project.
Okay, so seeing none, we'll close public comment and move on to commission deliberations. Are there any commissioners that'd like to make comments, make a motion, ask for more clarity?
I'm ready to make a motion. Are we ready? I'll make a motion to approve the Hunt Design Review Permit, file number 190-010-DR.
Move the motion. We have a second. All right, let's go ahead and go through our roll call on that again. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Barstow?
Aye.
Commissioner Figueroa?
Aye.
Commissioner Visage Delcott?
Aye.
Commissioner Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Davies?
Aye.
And aye from Chair Taggney. So motion carries. Congratulations. I think that what you did on your previous house on that property was fabulous. I watched it through the process and was very impressed with the historic accuracy of materials and everything about it. So I'm sure with the design that we can see in front of us and your track record, that this is going to be a great project. All right, that's it for that item, and we can move on. The rest of our agenda is just business items first.
Which we have none of.
Which we have none of, and correspondence and communications.
Do any commissioners have any correspondence? Okay. Seeing none?
Seeing none. I think that's a wrap. So thank you all tonight, and congratulations to the project applicants, and we'll see you next month.
Thank you. Thank you.
Adjourned.